Okay, we're going to go ahead and call Amin to order. It is Tuesday, February 7th, 2023. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
No, he's calling it ordered by himself.
No, I saw you out in the hallway, so...
Yeah, there you are. You had to, sir.
Okay. And just, I had some back surgery, so if I get up during the middle of session and stand or something, it's because my back can't take these...
Is it cranky?
Okay, yeah, I am, damn it. Okay, do you have any minutes?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
I have the county clerks' January 2023 fees, auditor's January 2023 revenue and expenditure report, and the treasurer's January 2023 reconciliation report.
Okay. Commissioner Committee liaison reports, upcoming meetings and events.
HBA board meeting this afternoon. Meeting for the fire tower update this afternoon. Solid Waste Management District Board meeting tomorrow. HBA General Membership tomorrow night. Coal County Chiefs have a meeting Thursday. There's also a convention visitors barrel athletic events fundraiser Thursday night at the Eagles. I think they still have tickets if you want to go. Friday, coffee at The Chamber. That's about it till next week.
Today, I'm meeting with several other folks from Heartland Port. Tomorrow, do we have four of us tomorrow? And salute 23. Thursday, City Public Works, LU Founder's Day event. Westside Business Association is kind of taking over some maintenance of the west side, or the park off of Missouri Boulevard off to the west. And Thursday evening, Russellville Alderman meeting.
I'm trying to keep my calendar kind of open. Tomorrow, I've got a Stars and Stripes American Legion meeting. Thursday, there's all kinds of stuff. There's LU Founder's Day at 11:00. There's a United Way luncheon where our health department's going to be recognized. And then there's a 911 policy group, which I'm going to go to that. And then I'm good. Saturday's a red slipper ball, but I'm not going to go to that because I don't have any red slippers. Okay, presentation from staff, consultants, and invited guests. Discussion of expenditure requests for courts laptop computers. Judge? Your Honor?
Well, thank you so much for taking me out of turn, and more so probably the people sitting in my courtroom waiting for me are more appreciative. If you may recall, since, what, 2014, the courts have been paperless to a large extent. Instead of having large stacks of files, everything we have on our computers, OSCA will supply some computers, but there are computers that county has and had provided since that time. And of course, then we have some county staff that are associated with court systems as well. Every five years, they cycle these machines out, and we're back to where I was about five years ago, checking, looking for assistance with the county machines. The county machines are essentially the courtroom computers, marshals, pretrial, one county staff. I guess pretty much it. So when I told you we did the budget at the beginning of the year, I said I thought we were going to need about $18,000. I've located some funds to take care of some other machines. And so that's why the request in front of you today is for 774431. I provided the three invoices for that. Three other sound recording computers. It's a bigger, more expensive machine that runs the sound recording systems that works for the courts where we don't have court reporters. We have those now in four of the five courtrooms, which helps us because we move people all of the time. When we move Judge Green downstairs to do orders of protection, I have to move Judge Limbaugh upstairs. And until I got the sound recording, which remember, we just got done about the first of the year in Judge Green's courtroom, Judge Limbaugh, there's work he could not do because he doesn't have a court reporter as an associate circuit judge. On the list are like the three sound machines, the two computers for county people. One is the lady who works in pretrial. The other is the county physician that you guys have time position, which is there. The last are some laptops. I've located funding for four of the laptops. We use those with our clerks. That's part of our inclement weather, slash disaster, slash pandemic, whatever response that are there. And so I'm only asking for three laptops, which takes the 68 invoices down to 29. That's pretrial. Their laptops are five years old. So if we're trying to stay on the same cycle as OSCA, I've got seven or eight more machines that will cycle, but their warranty is not out until August. And so we're going to run those as far as we can to spread that expense. And that expense is probably going to be six... Should be more than about $5,500. Anyhow, we're below the $18,000 number that we estimated. And like I said, because I could found some funding that we could use for the other machines. So we're asking for the county to pay the 774431 weekend. If you want to pay all of it, we will tender a check to the county for the four laptops, however Debbie wants to do it. So whatever makes it easier for you.
Well, this was in your budget.
Yeah, this is what we talk about each year, but I'm going to be able to get it done for a lot less than $18,000.
Yeah, I like that. Yeah, I like that, so...
That's in the capital, sales tax. It was a request in there, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, I'm good with it. Judge had talked to us about it before and let us know what was going on, so I appreciate the heads up on it.
So if you want us to send you a check and then send...
Were they all on state bid?
They're all on state bid.
Okay, either way, it doesn't matter.
Okay, I'll get you a check. All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much. Thank you for letting us go.
You bet. Next is multimodal transload facility project status update.
So Luke Holt Snyder with JC Reps here to discuss, along with me, an update to the project. We've talked here and there about it over the past, oh, past year. Things are really starting to take shape. Wanted to update the commission on where we stand, how things are going to look going forward. The core team meets every two weeks to kind of keep things moving along. We've had a lot of assistance from the Midmore RPC to kind of keep the grant side of things moving. JC Rev, CNPS, and then Capitol, the private interest, are all working together to keep the single movement. Everything's going good. We have, right now, we're in the very final stages of getting the project ready. The plan is, at this point, it's going to require some confirmations from UniPacific, would be to advertise this Saturday. That would give us a bid opening of March 15th. And with that, a likely notice to proceed of May 1st. We have to have approval from UniPacific and then also EDA and then MoDOT. Actually, we got the MoDOT approval last week to proceed with bidding. We need EDA and then UniPacific. So there's a few things, key factors, that we have to check those boxes before we can actually advertise. If for some reason we can't get it advertised this weekend, a week or two shouldn't hurt us too bad because we got a pretty good leadway between the bid opening and a nose proceed. So we're still sitting pretty good, but those things have to happen. Simultaneously with that, and I communicated to the commission that we advertise for requests for qualifications for a rail operator. That has been part of the plan going, you know, as we go forward into this next step. We cannot operate this facility, the transload facility, or the expanded rail service. We'll have to hire an operator. And that RFQ is out right now. And we will receive those statements and qualifications from interested operator companies. February 24th, I believe, is the date. And then we'll make a selection by May 6th. We'll meet with the commission and get the feedback between you and us as to who we want to select for that. Once we select that operator, we will begin negotiations. And actually, we kind of timed it out to where the operator will actually be part of what this facility looks like and how it grows going forward. So we wanted to select this operator before the project's done to help determine what it's going to look like when it's done because there's been a lot of activity. And Luke can kind of go into highlighting some of the activity and the interest that's been generated just from the fact that this project's out there and companies are learning about it and know what it could be. And in fact, an operator that I talked to last week showed a lot of interest and said this is a great area to be in and sees a lot of growth potential. So Luke, I'll maybe let you kind of highlight some of the key things as far as the growth of this and where it could go.
Yep. And so, let's see everybody this morning. And I think Eric hit on some of the major milestones, but, you know, was kind of quickly putting together a timeline of, you know, when this idea first came about. And so it was December of 2021, so 14 months ago was kind of the, the concept was being discussed. You know, some due diligence was being done at that point to kind of vet the idea. And so, you know, to where we're at today, already having an RFQ out there for an operator. Hopefully by the end of the week, having the final engineering specs ready to go out for bid for a rail construction contract as well. There's been a lot of activity and a lot of good partnership on this. I honestly feel, you know, from a public-private partnership that doesn't give any more casebook study, nothing's better than this. So, you know, to kind of fill in anything from Eric's comments was, you know, throughout the past couple of months, as there's been more public awareness, we initially did some outreach to private businesses within a, probably about a six-county region of Coal County to understand, vet the interest. You know, we got a lot of good positive feedback. Roughly 20 private industries expressed their interest in utilization of this build. Since then, a lot of industries that we did not reach out to initially, but organically have heard about it or are exploring opportunities for transportation efficiency upgrades have reached out about the value that this facility would provide to them. So I think where it was kind of, you know, initially getting a base of interest and support, I think was what we needed to know that there was value for this build. I think since then, it's been, it's kind of been surprising probably to us as much interest as there is from existing industry. And I think, you know, supporting our existing base of business, some of our largest industries, as well as some smaller industries, have different kind of use cases for it. So as we get an operator on board, we'll be able to better identify their needs on the site to accommodate their products. So what kind of loading and offloading equipment, what kind of storage, warehousing, et cetera, needs to be in place. So we're finalizing engineering and architectural elements right now. I think the goal is to have that, assuming approvals from EDA and UP. We would be out for bid for a construction contract this weekend, and that would be open for roughly 30 days with the potential construction then commencing around May 4th, so...
I did forget to add that we do have a clearing contract in progress right now. That was due to the federal endangered species requirement on Indiana bats, so...
Yeah, so we sent the Indiana bats to Osage County?
I think so, yes.
Yeah, so there's excavators out there. Trees are down, they're moving, so you can see progress, sorry.
One of the ways to measure the size of one of these facilities is the number of rail cars that come and go annually. Would you hazard a guess as to, once this thing is up and running, how many cars might come and go on an annual basis there?
We, that is something that the operators have asked. And preliminary, based on just as it will sit when it's done, we're looking at about 1,000 or so per year, but that could grow. I mean, that's within a few years, but then that's got some capability to grow. Will be somewhat limited by the length of our siding that we're building that UP is making us build as part of the project. We hadn't originally planned on that, but somewhat limited on that. So as the facility keeps on growing, assuming it hits maybe the target within a few, you know, a few years to five years or so, we do have an option to add on to that siding. So that would be a future project as this thing grows.
The rail that goes in there, does it look like a fork now with three prongs on it or four prongs on it?
There's a main line that comes off of the UP main. And then for each current facility that it serves, there's their own spur line and then kind of the passing line. So to connect to the next individual spur until you get to Morse, which is currently the end of the track. And there's a double siding for that as well.
Okay, but once you get into the zone, it's three tracks or I don't know what? And it could be, that's where you have expansion opportunities down the road because the room is there.
The transload facility is the very terminus of the project.
Right.
You can expand.
Yeah, okay.
Additionally, you could have additional industry come in, acquire property, and then have their own siding to it.
Got it.
And that would all be served by this facility.
So what was part of the, like, kind of the future buildout as this grew in use was going to be kind of a siding track? So where, you know, UP would drop and pull. So they would drop the load, then the operator switches those rail cars within the rail terminal area. It was built to be, built and constructed in the future. UP said, "We'll build it now." And so that's part of the project. And so we're kind of looking at additional resources to help offset some of those additional costs that will come with that. But what that allows is a certain rail car capacity right now that at one time UP could drop off a certain number of rail cars and pick up based on the siding that we will have in place. That will serve the business case now and the next few years, for sure. If we meet goals, you know, five, 10 years from now, there are opportunities to add additional sightings so that we can have more rail cars dropped and pulled from UP as the business case kind of presents itself.
So say we have 1,000 cars a year when it opens, and we'll be charging them a fee to use our tracks. So will that be enough to cover the management portion?
That'll be part of the negotiation with the operator.
Okay.
At this point, I think it's too early to tell, especially early on as this thing is small and growing. There might be a component of the revenue side that the operator pays us back or we're contributing a little bit initially. That would be part of the negotiation.
The operator is going to be the one to, you know, develop the business structure to the fees and the charges, kind of like a tipping fee or kind of a usage fee that they would charge for the services that they're providing to the different industries that are utilizing the rail line. And so, you know, the goal is, you know, from it being operated privately is to identify ways to maximize the facility, grow it from a revenue standpoint, which then would also, at the same time, may be required to do all the maintenance and upgrades to the facility. So, you know, a big piece at the beginning, too, was how we get county on rail business. And so this is a way to, you know, allow the private industry to find the best ways to capitalize on what is a unique asset. I mean, it's not, not very many communities have their own line. So, you know, the industrial drive portion of UP line is a UP line. So it's operated and maintained by UP, but it's also subject to UP. So, you know, their schedule kind of dictates the service that's being provided.
And Coal won't, Coal County won't be unique here. I mean, there are these operators scattered around the country, and that's who will come to the table when you ask the RFQ, right?
Yes, there was at least six or seven in Missouri, private operators of private lines or contract, you know, operating or something like that. So this is very common. And the one in particular that reached out to me, they have facilities all across the country, like 10 or 15. So, and they're based out of Chalhoun.
A lot of them specialize in, you know, transload. So it could be intermodal, so it could be rail, highway, surface, water. So they may have background in everything, specialize in certain aspects. So I think there's been a handful of interest that's reached out. I know from RFQ being out there from some of these operators that are currently operating in Missouri and other states.
Yeah, there are no questions, Warren. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Okay, do we have any commission comments? Mids and contracts. Letter agreement from Union Pacific for the multimodal transfer...
I'm still waiting on this.
You're still waiting on that? Okay, so we're going to table it, okay.
I'm a little optimistic whenever we first learn to do that as a band after.
Okay. Then we will keep moving along. Approval and signing of MOU with the American Red Cross.
Good morning.
Morning.
A few weeks ago, I was approached by the Red Cross for having an MOU between our agencies, which is a standard practice for them. The Red Cross specializes in mass sheltering, and that's actually something that they are under FEMA contract to provide. So they're a part of that FEMA system when it comes to, you know, disaster response. And this MOU looks pretty standard. It was reviewed by Jill and really asked very little of us. The main point is, when we activate an EOC or when we have any sort of sheltering operation, they would like to be advised.
I think they should.
I think so, too, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm not aware if we have had MOUs in the past with the Red Cross, but I know through my dealings at other employment that we've had MOUs with the Red Cross. So I believe emergency management is typically involved in this. So this doesn't seem to be out of the ordinary for them to ask and get this updated.
I'm good with it. Yeah, Jill reviewed it as well.
Yeah. Want to make a motion, sir?
I'll make a motion to execute the MOU between the American Red Cross and Coal County.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Approval and signing of agreement with Healthy Blue?
Good morning.
Good morning.
As part of our clinic operations, we have agreements with certain insurance agencies to do billing for things like immunizations or family cleaning. And this is just an agreement with Healthy Blue, which is like the managed care portion of Blue Cross Blue Shield. And Jill has reviewed the contract.
Yeah, I'm fine.
I'll offer a motion to approve and sign the agreement with Healthy Blue.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. 2023 EMPG mini-grant.
The mini-grant this year, I applied for three projects. One was our project for some sort of application or program for emergency management to do disaster management tracking through like disaster assessments and things like that. That was not approved, but two other projects, one being the Rapid Warn System, which is a dispatch aided outdoor warning siren alert system. So it gives our dispatchers the ability to not only have a radar overlay, but also it gives the National Weather Services Polygon and over the overlay that has our active sirens, so they can activate them easily without alerting the entire county. They can activate just a subsection of that or maybe just a, if we panel off the county, they can activate just a portion of the county. The other one was for repairs to some of our poles. We've had woodpecker holes strike again, and so...
East or west?
Jeff, do I want to say? But to get those filled and then get mesh put over them so that we can stop the woodpeckers from attacking our poles.
We got rid of the Indiana bats. Why do we need to get rid of the woodpeckers?
There's plenty of woods for them to live in. I don't think they'll miss that one hole.
Yeah.
Yeah, do you have the grant or the paperwork or...
Oh, I do have.
These are, it's two of the same thing?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it was one grant, but has two projects within it. I do have the cover letter. Would you like to see the cover letter?
Yeah, they look identical here, so I didn't know if we were doing the same thing twice or there's actually two.
Oh, those are the exact same copies, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's one grant covering two projects.
Okay, so I have to sign one.
Got to do both, thank you.
Okay.
Sorry. But you don't have to initial every page like you do in some of those...
Like for the sheriffs.
Yeah.
Yeah, some of those grants.
He's not here today, so feel free to lash out.
I can jab at him a little bit.
We'll let Eric do that.
Did you dodge the question about eastern versus western on these numbers?
I tried.
Okay.
I just can't let this slide. Year after year, there are more of those problems on the east side.
It seems to be an issue, yeah.
We've got good wood, that's all I'm saying.
Not more peckerwoods.
We're going to make, put the metal poles up.
That's what we need to start doing.
And these are all our poles, right? Because some of them are owned by the entities then?
Well, one of the entities is their pole.
Okay.
But since we installed it, I included them as we get their invoice or their, what do you call that? Every quarter, we get a report from the company who looks after them. So I included them in on this, so that will be for, I think it's Taos. I think it was their pole.
Are they willing to pay us for them?
Oh, this is 100% covered. This isn't...
I'll make a motion to execute the EMPG mini-grant 2023.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, approval and signing of Entrado 911 phone system change order number one.
Morning.
Morning.
I will try and make this as clear as possible. So this is the system that allows us to tap into the 911 phone network located at Jeff City. Their contractors came on site, evaluated our system, and decided that we needed some more hardware. That's resulted in a price increase of roughly $11,000, of which there was roughly $6,000 deleted out. So the new contract amount for this is $132,129.16. This pocket of money was located within a $250,000 award that you guys awarded from ARPA. Even though that there is a price increase here, we are still under the project cost at $248,996.52. So roughly, we're $1,000 under budget even with this change order. So just asking to approve the change order so that we can get this equipment ordered and join the 911 phone network.
Yeah, I'm good with it. I hate the increases in them, but on a project that big, you know, you're going to have something. So there were some deductions and some adds. So in the scheme of things, it's very minimal. I'll make a motion to approve and sign the Entrado 911 phone system change order number one. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And just while we're on the subject of 911 and communications, one of the other very large projects that was funded out of ARPA is about to become reality. We are going live on next Tuesday on the joint CAD computer... We are going live on next Tuesday on the joint CAD computer-aided dispatch network, which virtually ties our communication centers with the city, which will improve drastically the level of service when somebody calls 911 in a medical emergency. So we're super excited about that. It's, it's a big lift and it's a milestone for our cooperation with, with our other public safety agencies in Cole County. So a lot of cool things happening there, so.
Okay, approval and signing of priority dispatch quote from EMS Capital.
Yep, so this is a, an item that was in our budget. What this allows us to do is create a third dispatch system or desk within our building. We're working through some of the hardware on this other thing that we just talked about. So basically, when the project's complete, we'll have three dispatching stations instead of two. What this is, is just the software that allows our folks to determine what the medical emergency is. It's all the questioning and the pre-arrival instructions. Those are all digital on a computer-based system, and this was in my capital budget for this year. Toll amounts, $5,650. 1,400 of that is the yearly license, which will then be a repeat cost that we'll budget for in subsequent years.
Make a motion to approve and sign the priority dispatch quote from EMS Capital for $5,650.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And one last thing, we are hosting the Chiefs meeting this Thursday night, so.
Did you do that on purpose? Do you have other plans? C I R chief.
It's every February we host, so.
You should distinguish, given that it's a Super Bowl weekend, that when you talk Chiefs here today, you're talking not the Kansas City Chiefs.
Public safety chiefs.
Correct.
Okay. Do we have any unfinished business? New business, accounts payable review.
I'd ask for approval of accounts payable pending review.
Motion to approve accounts payable pending review.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Second and final reading of budget adjustment number one.
This is for $6,600. It's the sheriff's department. It's the 50% of the bulletproof vest, so I do need a budget adjustment or approval today.
Good. All right, make motion to sign budget adjustment number one for $6,600.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, second and final reading of budget adjustment number two.
This is for $272,986. This is for the health department. This is on their workforce contract that they spoke about when they were up here the last time, so I'd ask for approval.
Okay, good. Make a motion to sign budget adjustment number two for $272,986.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, are we ready for signing of soil and water conservation court order for 2023?
Here it is. This is the annual amount of the $5,000.
Did we talk about them coming up and making a presentation or anything?
She did say that they have a board meeting at the end of February, and they were gonna discuss the time to come up here and talk to you guys.
You approved to increase that to 7,500 budget. Does the contract still say 5,000?
Yes, I thought it wasn't. I guess I looked it up.
They asked for 7,500 and.
I looked it up.
You approved 7,500.
Okay, so really before.
Yeah.
We need to get a clarification before we approve this?
Well, you'll get one here in Justice.
Yeah, I didn't remember if that was, that was part of the reason we wanted them to come up and do a presentation, because I think there was some of the question as to what all they provide, the services they do for the county. I know they've been up here before, but it's been several years ago.
Yes, sorry, it was, it should have been 7,500. So we'll do a new court order. Well, you can wait till they come up if you want. We don't have to sign this till they come up.
It's already approved, so it's in the budget.
That's my bad. Oh, it is. I'm sorry, I said the wrong thing. It says 7,500. I just said the wrong thing.
I knew that, I was just testing you.
Debbie, you never make mistakes.
I know, I looked it up, so, okay. So I said 5,000, but it's 7,500.
Okay, well, I'll go ahead and then make a motion to sign the court order for the agreement of the Cole County Soil and Water Conservation District in the amount of 7,500.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
They should come up.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
ARPA's Stormwater Runoff Control Project Discussion.
So back to last year, when the ARPA projects were kind of starting to filter out and the commission was reviewing and taking applications for that, we worked with Debbie to submit an application for funding to do stormwater runoff control projects on the west side of town, primarily three different watersheds, Westview Drive, or I'd say the Westview subdivision area, Apache Flats and Natchez Trace is what we're calling them. Kind of revised the document a little bit, and went through Forbes as the company, and they more or less approved this as an appropriate use of ARPA funds. And as I understand it, the commission has about a million dollars set aside for potential projects with the first being to study the watersheds and determine what to do. So the commission approved us requesting qualifications from companies to perform this engineering, hydraulic and hydrologic studies to determine what to do and how to solve the stormwater flooding issues that we're having in certain parts of town, mostly west of town, in the older, older areas, older subdivision areas. So we did that, received five responses. We sent it to six local companies, received five responses, and all of them were very good, making it pretty challenging to review and select. That's what we find when we do these types of things. It's, it's a little tough to decide who to select. But we did finally narrow it down to a decision, and Matt and I reviewed these, and we selected Bartlett and West and BAR Engineering to do this work. So what we would do is, Bartlett and West, we would have them do the Westview subdivision watershed. And if you look in your document there, this is what was submitted to the, to the companies to look at for, for these areas, project areas. So Bartlett and West is currently working with us on the South Brooks Base Three project, and that does include a detention basin that we're working with a developer to do. And so they're already performing a lot of work in here and analyzing a part of this watershed, so we felt it best that they be the one to do this area. And they've done a lot of other stormwater projects in recent years there. So that would be our choice for that. And then BAR Engineering, they have extensive experience doing large-scale modeling of watersheds to determine appropriate measures to detain water or retain, or various ways to slow water down and minimize the impacts downstream. So through that process, we decided to select BAR. And with that, I have another document that shows kind of an expanded watershed, we're calling the Binder Lake watershed, that includes Apache Flats and Natchez Trace. If you look at the outfall of this whole watershed here is just down below from where Natchez Trace watershed dumps down on the other side of Henwood Drive, or Henwood Lane. And we felt it best that we probably need to analyze what's going under Henwood coming out of Binder Lake as we're analyzing Natchez Trace. So we would, we would select, or we recommend selecting BAR Engineering to do the two, plus the expanded watershed and look at the whole thing. Now, if you look at this Binder Lake watershed, if you see all the yellow and red, those are current stormwater facility locations that we have, either pipes or inlets. You get into a lot of this extra, and it's mostly rural, so there's not a whole lot of flooding issues that we're aware of. And actually, the only one that we know of is the old Baybrook field down right there. And that was not originally included in, in this right here. So by expanding this a little bit, taking into consideration more coming in, I think it'll, it'll make for a better all-around project to encompass everything. So that is what we discovered through the process of reviewing these and looking at it more in depth. So if the commission is okay with it, we would begin negotiations with BAR and Bartlett and West to determine scope and fee for these two projects. On top of that, as we reviewed these from the other companies, I also created a sheet here showing engineering selection for 2023. Red is currently projects we're working on with companies. It's kind of an unwritten procedure in Cole County to select local companies to perform our work if they're capable of doing it. And we find that in almost all cases, local companies can't do this work. And so we select the best one for the project, but knowing that many of them can do equally as good a work, we try to spread it out and keep it somewhat, give everybody an opportunity to do some work, because local companies are working and providing, you know, taxpayers for, for our county. So if you look at that, it shows the eight local companies that we do work with or have done work with. And we would, through this process, we have some other projects that we do need to begin design on, and that would be Lakewood subdivision stormwater, Randall Drive area stormwater, and Hickory Hill, where I wrote that right. So the three companies that we did not get selected for these stormwater control projects, we would begin negotiations with them, kind of let's go over a few of those other projects. And then there's other projects on the horizon as well. And if you look at Bartlett and West, part of the Westview Heights area, that includes some work we need to do on Scrugg Station and Shear Drive. So we would either roll that into one bigger project or keep that separate. That would be more of a sales tax related project, so we may keep those separate. But I just wanted to get this in front of you, discuss it, answer any questions you might have. Generally, with engineering type work, you select the company, that's who does the work, and then you negotiate scope and fee. If you can't come to an agreement on what that should be, then you would select the next one. But in all cases that I've been involved with at the county, we always can work out a scope and fee to bring a contract or an engineering agreement to the county commission for approval. So I guess the, our recommendation for the ARPA projects would be to proceed with BAR Engineering and Bartlett and West. And then we will, on the other ones, that'll be separate from this, this decision today, we will just bring those to you when we get those worked out and have a contract or agreement ready to sign. So I guess I would just entertain any questions or comments or direction you might have for us.
You know, I had called you before about it too, to kind of see how the decision process went, and if you look at some of them, they've done some of the work in that same area, and so they kind of, it makes sense to have them continue the work, so. And then we are spreading the love, so to say, with sharing some of the other projects with the other companies around here. We're lucky to have, lucky and I guess cursed to have that many good ones around here to work with, so.
I think that's great.
It is, it just, you have to pick one, and so it makes it difficult.
It's much better than when we only get one person bidding, but yeah, like this.
Yeah, well, these aren't even busy, they're just the RFQs, so.
Well, yeah.
I think that would get even harder, so, yeah.
This is probably just a little nit. Yeah, I think a couple of times you mentioned the west side of town, but it's, it's actually outside of, of the city limits.
Um, well.
Is that, is that accurate or not?
We most likely won't do a construction project out or in the city limits, but to analyze the watershed, we have to consider part of the city limits.
Yeah, right, because the water does come from the city to the county in some places.
Yes, so we're taking the city's water.
Yeah, okay.
And if you look at this drawing here, you can see the lighter shaded yellow, and even some of St. Barton's dumps into that, so we won't have to analyze that.
The water knows no.
They don't care about batteries.
That's right, yes. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so I think we probably need just a commission agreement to proceed with beginning negotiations with BAR and Bartlett and West.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to begin negotiations with BAR Engineering for the Apache Flats and Natchez Trace Estates ARPA Stormwater, and then with Bartlett and West for the South Brooks Base Three Stormwater Drive.
Yes.
Second, and was, did?
Don't include South Brooks.
Okay, so Bartlett and West is with Westview Heights?
Yes, yes, sorry.
And the Scrugg Station and Shear Drive?
Yes.
Okay. I'll amend it to be Westview Heights and the Scrugg Station and Shear Drive stormwater projects.
Scrugg Station and Shear Drive would technically not be part of ARPA, but if we will negotiate with Bartlett and West because it's part of that watershed, so we probably need to simultaneously do both, so.
Okay, now I've got both of them included then, so.
How about restating what this first motion is?
Make a motion to begin negotiations with BAR Engineering on the Apache Flats and Natchez Trace ARPA Stormwater projects, and then with Bartlett and West on the Westview Heights ARPA Stormwater project, and then also with the Scrugg Station and Shear Drive Stormwater project.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Subdivision street acceptance. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
So this is the list of subdivision, subdivision streets that were constructed in the last couple of years. Anything constructed last year will be in a one-year interim period in which we will basically plow snow on. And then after that, if they pass an inspection, it will be accepted into our system. And then there are about a half a dozen streets that have slated their one-year interim period, and the streets are still holding up, and we, we've done the inspections and we would accept them fully into the county system. So I've handed you all a list of the streets and the associated flats for those streets.
That's a lot of streets.
There's a few this round, but it's just those portions that are.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
There's not a whole lot there.
There's not a lot of mileage with it, but there's a lot of street names, so. With that, I do have court orders to, if you all approve these, I have court orders for you all to sign to accept either interim or fully accepted to our system.
I, I guess there's none of these that are, there, there's no instances where a portion of a street is being not accepted and a portion is. We're not running into that, right? In other words, as time evolves, both from start to finish, that, that street is expected to be accepted? Or do you?
So there, there are a few streets that are being accepted as interim currently that attach to interim from last year, but a couple of them do have a few issues that need to be taken care of before I will accept. The first portion has fine. Until that gets accepted first, I'm not going to accept the second section final unless the first section's final also.
Makes sense. We're, we're not going to have an instance where the snow plow is going down the street and it raises the plow and then goes and drops the plow, right?
I, I will do my due diligence to prevent that.
Got it. Okay. Let's see, I, can we do this all in one motion? To accept the, as published, right?
I don't think so.
Okay. I'll make a motion to accept the, the 2023 subdivision acceptance schedule as, from item number one through item 17, as, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. First reading of budget adjustment number four.
This is for $124,107.14. This is the sheriff's department. It's the drug task force. No action today, I'll bring it back up in 10 days.
Oh, there's 17 of those?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. County facilities mowing discussion. I think I kind of brought that up a little bit, because I, we need to see if parks was gonna do it, or if our facilities were gonna do it, so.
So we had some questions too last week about, sorry, I was thinking that budget So we had some question too last week about, sorry, I was thinking that budget time, we had talked about it and we decided that parks was going to do it. But then I revisited with Debbie and she said we had decided to put that on hold for now. So that's where I think we were with it.
So the question came up a little more recently, kind of some conversation with Sam, and it's been an ongoing conversation as to whether Parks Department's going to take care of mowing or that's going to stay under facilities maintenance, under Greg. And so back in 2022, we created the Parks Department that brought with it this parks person or this parks supervisor being responsible for county facility landscaping. And then also we were already doing parking lots, no removal, but that officially had that person under general revenue doing that for county facilities. So we began that. Also, we discussed in 22, the idea of the Parks Department or the county taking over or assume or having a long-term lease with a trust for the Elston Park, the Lawrence J. Ren Memorial Park is what it would be called. So that's been on, on, on the table for discussion. I think the commission is generally in support of doing that. The only concern is, or the only issue is right now, we don't have the personnel or really the funding, but primarily the personnel to maintain that. So as things started rolling late 22, we were asked to look at if we were, if we could, what it would look like if we were to add mowing under the Parks Department to mowing of all county facilities. And so I did put together kind of a, would be just a proposed changes to the parks budget for us to do this. It would require us to hire one full-time parks employee. It would be an entry level equivalent to an operator position in public works. And it would also require a part-time seasonal employee. And so the majority of the increase to the parks budget would be personnel. And I sent that to Debbie and Mark as well. So they've had a chance to look at it hopefully. But there would be the benefits and everything that would go with that. So the increase to that budget would be $73,500 almost. And again, most of that'd be personnel. So if we were to do this, we would also need to assume responsibility or we would just have to take the mowing equipment that Greg has as well as the trailer. And this, we've discussed it a lot with our staff, Brian and his staff, and this is something we can totally do. With this addition of the employee or one and a half employees, we would be able to begin the early phases of the Elston Park, the Ren Park out there. That would be initially, we've talked about creating a pavilion, a road down to the lake, trail around the lake and basically we utilize it as a fishing lake. So there would be some funding needed for improvements there. We think there might be some grant opportunities we could look at to find that. So a lot of potential there, but it does take hiring additional employee. With the mowing, adding the mowing and adding the personnel, there will be an opportunity for them to do other things than the parks. The mowing's not going to require a full week for them. So we would be able to shift some of that over to that new park and start developing that out. Additionally, I guess you could say right now, we basically just have, have the personnel just to be able to maintain the parks as they are. We can't really do a whole lot of improvements because time doesn't allow for it. Having the additional employee would allow us to do a little more and make more improvements at the park. So we just need to get this on, on the table and have the commission make a decision if this is the direction we want to go. There's been a little talk also about us handling the downtown snow removal sidewalk and whatnot for the buildings. It's our opinion that we cannot do this and maintain the same level of, you know, quality that Greg's and his crew is doing right now, doing operating it from our shop out on Monticello. We would only have the one employee. We can't do that and do what Greg's doing right now. There could be the possibility that this employee could do some work down here, but we don't want to direct that. We just don't have the personnel to be able to ensure that we can do that. So I would recommend keeping that as it is. But that's.
Yeah, come on up here, Greg.
If I'm going to still take care of the snow, then I'm going to need to begin with plowing the saltwater and add it back into the budget. About $35. That and Bill John Deere is sleeping even worse. I've got about that big, I need the tractor now.
Yeah, that's the one we recently replaced and we would recommend getting rid of that at the end of the year. So.
Well, we've added a lot with Adams and then when EMS is done and you have.
I should have miles of sidewalk.
Yeah. So there's a lot of sidewalk, just, just here uptown.
Also, you know, we do the parking lots, but we can't get to every little spot and Greg takes care of all the little additionals. And I know that kind of that spur of the moment snow we had about three, four weeks ago, I know Greg did a lot of that parking lot work just because of the time that it hit. So you, you know, we can do a lot with the truck, but you know, there's still requires additional that Greg and his crew does. So.
It's tight to be within trucks.
So the way it's going right now, snow removal works pretty good. You know, Kevin Bishop, our parks supervisor, he handles that and does the parking lots good.
I thought we were leaving snow removal alone either which way we did it.
That's our recommendation. We wouldn't be able to manage it very well down there and only have the one employee.
The parks part where we just, we put it on hold, was that just because we were waiting to see what happened with the Elston Park? I'm trying to remember that conversation.
I had just suggested we put it on hold until we got to the point where we would need this employee with you taking over grass cutting. And so rather than put it in his budget at the time, we, we, we decided to wait until we got to the point where you need, we need this person.
My understanding and talking with Mark is we've kind of finalized our budget, but it was, that was the decision just to put it on hold or just table it until we could get through the budget time and focus more efforts on how this would be and what we would need.
And a part-time person would only be summer, the grass and everything.
Summer seasonal, maybe, you know, high school kid or young adult, summer, you know, college student, that type. Or it could, it could be a little more extended. We've had retirees come back and work in the parks for us. In fact, Greg Block is currently doing that. It could be somebody like that as well.
It's the primary focus is county park.
Yeah.
Takes one person full-time to maintain county parks.
So the full-time and then the part-time, two people were, with the truck and trailer and the mowers, they would go around to county facilities.
So when you say what takes one person full-time to maintain county park?
During the summer, during mowing.
During the summer, what about the rest of the years?
That's, we use the part-time guy in county park during the summer just to take care of the mowing and weeding throughout that whole complex.
Right, during the summer, but what about?
Yes, during the summer, he's gone during the fall and winter.
So our retired person, just not to mention any names, is gone during the, he's just there during the summer.
Yes.
And then you still have one person?
One full-time.
One full-time parks supervisor right now. And there's always stuff to do in the parks throughout the year. Force it slower during the winter, but you can.
Right.
Tree trim.
So where's, where are we at with the Elston Park then?
I defer that to Harry.
I have not circled back to Hawthorne Bank or Dan Renfro. So that's, I wouldn't say we're on silence there, but we just haven't gotten back and forth because of our tentativeness of what we want to, what we're willing to spend. I think the offer is still there for us to lease it at a nominal fee of a dollar a year or something, but we do need to show some progress, I think, or they'll look elsewhere to satisfy the wishes of the very generous benefactor.
And I'm, I mean, I guess I'm fine if we accept it and work on it. But one of the questions that comes up is we're not going to own it. So how much are you going to put into it? You know, if we're putting another employee on and then we're going to make improvements to it and, you know, in a hundred years, obviously we won't be here, but we're spending a lot of money on it. And we do have a lot of other parks around here. So I'm sure it would be used, but how much are we going to put into it? I mean, I don't know how many people necessarily in Cole County want their tax money going towards that. So I just, I'm not wanting to just jump on it and get crazy with it. I know there's places, it's pretty far on the west side. So probably something more used on the west side. There'd be things like a dog park or whatever, if we have some kind of plan.
We plan to raise woodpeckers out there.
I'm going to put a wood post out there just to try to draw them over there for y'all. So.
You know, we, we could satisfy part of the concern about improvements by a long-term lease of a very nominal amount. In other words, even though we may not own it, we'll get the use of it for an extended period of time. I'm, you know, wavering off to what could happen. But I think the trustee is, looks to us first. And if, if, if we can't make a deal that satisfies all the parties, they'll, they'll probably have to find another way to satisfy the wishes of that benefactor.
Yeah, we went and looked at it. It really is neat. And it's a lot of pasture land, slope downward. That little, the pond or small lake would make it, if you stocked it with fish, would make it really pretty neat. Now there's those cattle that are down there too. So would we still allow cattle?
We wouldn't, but the trust would be responsible. And they, I understand they're supposed to be gone if they're not already.
Dead, yes.
So that would be, we wouldn't. Cattle's not in the long term.
Okay.
So I think it, I mean, the decision, the mowing thing, I mean, that's, you know, we know what it's going to take, but that's going to be, you know, in April through, let's say early November. And it's not going to be a full-time to add that. The additional staff time that we'll have available, that's where you can get into making the leap to this Elston Park, this Ren Park, if we're going to do that. So I think the two kind of go hand in hand. The only, the only thing is this is timely right now because we do need to advertise for a new employee if we're going to do that. We recently, we had an opening, we hired somebody. There was one or two additional applications that we didn't select, however they could be well suited for this type of town. So it's possible we could.
Greg's got some people retiring. You can just.
Not anymore.
Hand them over.
So then the salary for this would be our starting salary?
Starting salary of $32,000 for equipment operator one position. You want to think on it for a week or so, that'd probably be okay. We don't want to wait too long because like I said, we got to get, you know, get rolling on the, get the application out there.
What if I did this? If I gave Dan Renfro a call and say, we've got to have a little more solidness to, to the deal before we expend dollars on our side. And if they're comfortable executing some kind of a long-term nominal fee that we could enjoy it for some period of time, we would know that our money's being well spent. Not the, not the dollar a year, but the incurred cost. So what do you think of that, Jeff?
Yeah, I think I'd like to know more about where the Elston project is going before we just.
Have you gone out and looked?
Throw another person and a half in there. I'd say maybe one person to start off with if we do that. They, they'd be taking on quite a bit of responsibility with that and the grass cutting up here. But I don't know, about one and a half people. So.
Have you gone out and looked at that yet?
No, I didn't make it out that day.
You and Kathy ought to go take a picnic.
I've seen lakes and ponds and fields. I mean, there's paths and you can do stuff on it. Just not so much.
Yes, sir.
Where would be some savings by moving? Why, I mean, if we're asking, if we're asking for $73,000 more in the budget, shouldn't there be some savings just moving, mowing? Are we just going to increase the budget? It's, I mean, I don't mean to pick on Greg, but it seems to me there should be some savings on the other end too. So where's that coming? Where's that coming from?
We still have to maintain and clean our buildings. Where are you going to take it from there?
That's my question.
Well, we talked about that at budget. We were transferring, not really losing a person for Greg, to the sheriff. That way he's got his own supervision and maintenance or janitorial position. That was going to be kind of one of the deals there. If you're going to add somebody to do the grass mowing and stuff, we are taking away some duties. So then would you take away a person? But that, right, grass mowing's four months out of the year, five months out of the year. April.
Seven, April to early November.
So.
April on over.
So it's not really even a full-time person, but Greg's having struggles right now because he's got people in and out quite a bit. So that's a whole nother discussion we got to talk about. But I agree with you, Mark. If we're going to be adding somebody, somebody over here, then we need to find someplace to eliminate.
Does that, another position and a half? How many other new positions did we add in the budget, Sam?
Let's see, 10.
Yeah.
I think it was 10, but three of them.
Right.
Yeah.
You know.
Just, just my concern.
It's, it's fair concern.
Adding to the budget, but if we're just transferring responsibility, shouldn't there be some savings on the other end?
And just for the record, I'm not advocating that this is something that we have to do. Greg's managing the mowing fine, the way it is now. If the, I was asked to present this and if, if the commission wants to do this, the other opportunity that comes with it is adding Elston Park and beginning that. That's maybe the side part of that that's.
So maybe we need to figure out if we're going to do the Elston Park. And if not, I mean, you still have part-time people in the summer to, one.
But they're not out of the park. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. The summer, summer student type seasonals that we hired just for the summer months, they go on the road bridge side. The retiree that works six months, that part-time, he is in the park right now. Yes. And that's all he does. He doesn't do any road bridge. He's just strictly a park.
We got one full-time and one part-time in parks right now.
Yeah. Well, that's what I, that's why I kind of brought it up.
I just, I just need to schedule weekly, fit those hours in.
And by adding one and a half people, we don't need them fully mowing at county facilities. There's extra work for them to do that we would have to find a use for that. And so that's where the Elston Park comes into play as well as additional, that's we can expand what we're doing in the current parks. Right now we are somewhat limited in improvements we can make just with one and a half staff, primarily taking care of maintenance.
So could you talk to Dan Renfro and maybe we'll put it back on the agenda for next week?
Okay.
Yes.
Would it be worthwhile to bring Dan back in here and have another conversation with him? Maybe?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, what were they waiting for? What were we waiting for? Were we just trying to decide if we're going to accept it?
They wanted a plan. They wanted a plan as to what direction and what you were going to do with that property. I mean.
I think we looked at it and then we kind of went into budget and everything else and it got put on the back burner. So it's not that we, we just haven't done anything with it.
The big decision to make here, 175 acres of ground.
Is a lot.
That's tripling, at least maybe quadrupling the acreage of parks we currently maintain. So it's a, it's a big decision to make.
Also, when you say maintain, you've got grass fields out there that somebody can cut the hay on and we don't have to cut that every day. So we're not maintaining 175 acres. We're going out there and making sure maybe the side of the road is cut and you can make a path around the lake. And, you know, they're giving it to us, but right now we're looking at a $74,000 increase that's being given to us as well with a person and a half and another vehicle and that stuff. So.
Vehicle wise, we keep what we have right now. There's the 515 with the dump or hoist and then there's a pickup truck. So we wouldn't have another vehicle at this point, but that is something to think about. And that would be a sales tax expense if we have to do that in the future.
Have we ever asked for, or searched for grant money for parks?
Not actively pertaining to this new one, uh, we have utilized grants in the current parks, mostly with playgrounds. There's stuff out there, it just takes some time searching for it. We we can do that, but, you know, just go back to, we're we're a little limited on how much we can get into that, just with all the other responsibilities that we have. Other entities out there that could help search for for grants, might, you know, we could tap into that, possibly NPLR, we see. They've been good helping us find some grants.
Yeah, it'd be great if we take over the Elston Park, to have grants to pay for a pavilion or something.
There might be some stipulations in it, too, as far as whether you own the property or don't own the property at that point, too.
Yeah, what kind of improvements you want to put in there if you're not actually going to own it.
Right.
So, you know, but if we're going to improve it, and then depend on how long the lease is good, then we're making much better for them, and then however many X amount of years, then they decide, hey, well, y'all made this really nice, we want to keep it ourselves, so.
Talk to Dan Renfro and.
Eric mentioned grants earlier, too, if we can get some grants to do some of that stuff, then I think that makes it a lot more feasible. Just adding a whole bunch to it, and then do we have to, is that going to add to, is the sheriff going to go out there and patrol it more? Because I know we've had issues at our other county parks, and, you know.
And we have.
I don't know why people enjoy, I mean, I enjoy burning stuff too, but not other people's buildings, or trash cans, so.
Or culver pipes.
Culver pipes, yeah.
It's a very nice gesture, but then, is it really needed in this community to have yet one another, another park? So is there a survey maybe you guys want to do for the public to see if they were interested, or, or maybe surveys don't work?
I'm not sure people will use it, it's just how much do we want to put into it? Because it, I mean, if you have a lake there, they can go fishing, you got Binder Lake, you got a couple more here in town.
That are pretty close to this.
Well, you have Neecamp, Neecamp Park in St. Martin's is is a wonderful park.
And that's pretty close to where this is.
Yeah.
It's not very far.
It's a great opportunity, but it brings with it other decisions that need to be made, and made and thought out. As Debbie said, if you're going to put money into it, long-term, is that, is that the best thing for the county? So I think bringing Dan Renfro back into the equation and getting more feedback from him as to what they envision with us. They would have a, as it was stated in that trust agreement, I believe, they would have a committee or something that would help.
Yes.
Assign some things, maybe.
We'll have to approve stuff.
Yeah.
There's, I mean, I know Jill, you've looked at some of the language in that document, we would have to go do that. A little concerned with that, I guess, to some degree, I mean, I, you know, a private or a separate committee kind of approving.
Directing the county funds are spent.
Exactly.
Well, they, they wouldn't necessarily be directing, I mean, we would direct how the county's funds are spent. Dan Renfro and his position was looking for, there's a, there's a gentleman out there who was a very good friend of the, of Mr.
Renfro.
Ren, and he, I think he was already picked as to be the head of the committee that would weigh in. So I will circle back with Dan, and let's put it on next week's agenda, and hopefully I'll have some resolution or some progress by then, before that.
I think that's fair. All right, thank you.
Okay.
Do you want to change the order, is this next one, or the last one about Greg, the summit mechanical?
Go to the acknowledgement of emergency purchase with summit mechanical.
Yes, this is Judge Beadham's third floor bathroom, uh, so far, they've gotten twenty-foot pipe chipped away, found five cracks where it's been leaking, and they're about five foot away from the down stack. For last year, the year before, it was cracking and leaking also. This will make the fifth cast iron pipe leaking in the building, uh, which also goes back to capital, which I'd like to discuss next week, if that's okay with you guys, because the project's started. See where you were at with that.
I think it was really on the agenda today, because you guys previously approved this as an emergency purchase, so now we're just bringing it back in here.
Well, we got our money's worth, because that, I think it burned in nineteen eighteen, so that that plumbing is is nineteen eighteen.
It's cast iron.
It's cast iron, it's collapsing.
Yeah.
There's galvanized water lines that are still, we're uncovering over there, lead pipes that we're uncovering.
So what do we need to do to, this morning, today, to acknowledge this emergency purchase that, is that, take a motion to?
Motion to approve a summit mechanical.
Because it was for sixteen thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars, it's all what it was. And so I think you guys, I talked to Jill, and I think you guys have to say how you voted, since it was an emergency. Do you have a copy of it?
You got the contract, because it changed a couple of times, one time it didn't have the.
They, yeah.
Well, I actually had a question on the labor part of it, and then they came back and submitted a new one with the flooring repairs, which needed to be a part of this too, because we need to have it all encompassing, and then they came back again with the revised.
Yeah, we came back.
Is this the final?
Yeah, that's the final.
So what's the total here?
Sixteen thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Okay, and that's got the flooring, and then the corrected labor.
Labor, yes.
Now, are they, are they limited to working just an hour or two in the morning, or what's?
They're starting around four-thirty in the morning, work until nine in the morning.
When the, when the court becomes active, okay?
Yes.
Four-thirty?
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, I talked to Greg about that, he said they're going to be starting ahead of time, and maybe having an hour of time to work while people are showing up, but once things got going, they were out of there, so, yeah.
Yep, just boot them in line.
So do we?
Well, we did.
How about a motion to ratify the decision we previously made for emergency purchase with summit mechanical? And the updated invoice is sixteen thousand, six seventy-five for the repair on the third floor. Plumbing in the, in the courthouse off of Judge Beadham's courtroom.
Do you have longitude and latitude?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And that will come out of capital.
Yeah, we had emails going back and forth.
Exact.
Well, uh, what concerns me, I mean, this has to be done, and we're doing it, the rest of the building has the same age pipes. So a hundred and X-year-old pipes are beginning to fail, uh, where do we go for the warranty on this, right?
We, we had this problem in one of the other bathrooms, but five years ago? Man, I'll tell you what, those walls are solid plaster. Jim Wish was up there, we were trying, you assume you have a sink, that the pipes would run right there, and it, I mean, that that plaster's like. And then when we got back there, the pipe wasn't there, it was over six inches. And, uh, but it's going to continue to happen.
Yes. We're going to need to look at, you know, boilers now, we're putting it at ninety-nine, they're twenty-five years old now. Average age, if you take care of them, they're twenty-five to thirty. It's going to go, it's going to come back. How far, how soon do you guys want to tackle that problem?
Well, if we're going to do all this, we're going to have to have someplace for the courts to go, which makes it more imperative that, uh.
That's where the old jail coming down makes sense to do that.
Yeah.
And then while you're working on the floor or whatever, you can move people.
Yeah, that's what, that's.
So.
Yep, we're on the same page.
Did I hear a motion to remove the jail?
I'll sit down and go through some numbers that we're talking about.
Well, it's.
Pranger Center, um, what else, we got some big numbers.
We got EMS station, Pranger, uh.
Yeah.
The jail.
Jail.
Edition, uh.
The clock, the clock, the clock.
Eric Landware talks about a new building too, so.
Yes, I've got, supposed to be the wing this week on the spelling, trying to finalize.
If that's still in there.
We got a really good bid to take the jail down from Aaron's, who is going to be doing some work on taking down some of the city's houses. We need to see how long they will hold that.
A working meeting between you three to come up with that long-term plan, I think.
Okay, well, we, we got you covered for this for right now.
Yep.
Like I said, next week, I'll also have a couple of projects started and getting locked off, but aren't working yet.
Yeah, can you cut grass in the summer?
No.
Oh.
I'm thinking that sounds good.
Okay, we got that, then we will go back to the twenty-twenty-two audit engagement letter from Williams Keepers LLC.
It's a pretty much standard year-to-year, uh, the changes, I think I outlined, you all got my email and a copy of the contract, okay? The base fee went up about six percent, which they can do in the CPI near year, so. There was the twenty-six hundred dollar, it was up to twenty-six hundred dollar charge to implement Gatsby Statement eighty-seven on leases. I think we're finding that we really don't have much, other than cheap oil left, though. String him on, on, if that, if we get the twenty-six hundred dollars, it'll be that striker, striker lease is like the, the big thing, but that, that shouldn't be too difficult to implement. So I doubt if, I really don't think we'll hit that, I, I wouldn't think we hit that twenty-six hundred dollar additional fee, it should be less. And then there's the, that appendix one at the very end, that Williams Keepers added this year. Just, uh, they're just adding this to all of their contracts, uh, engagement letters, they told me. And, uh, there's some pretty hefty fees in there if we, if it happens, but I was, I talked to the partner, Amanda, and none of that should have happened, and we will have very upfront discussion with her, with them, if, if they think we're not getting them items on time or whatever to, so I can't imagine we hit any of those fees, even though I am new to this.
We had one office that that we had to keep begging and begging and begging, but other than that, I think everybody got it to them in a timely fashion.
So, anyway, so I asked that you approve this, and then I'll give you two copies to sign, one for the record and one, one for me, if you're okay with that.
Is this our last year, under the current?
Yeah, good, good question, this is the last of five-year current proposal that we have with Williams Keepers, so we'll have to renegotiate that for the two thousand twenty-three.
And the, at the end of the day, the, the annual fee is in the mid-fifties, or where are we?
Uh, it's fifty-seven, six.
Four.
Fifty-seven, four is the base, the base fee.
Okay.
For this year.
So they're working out with, negotiating with them, when we do bid that every five years, has worked out well for the county.
Okay.
Or putting that back out there.
Okay, I'll make a motion to sign the audit engagement letter from Williams and Keepers for fifty-seven thousand, four hundred.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, do we have anything else?
I just, you talked about you got a meeting for the Salute twenty-twenty-three?
Yes.
You know, I, I saw something in emails going to, or maybe an advertising, it's going to One Day Project, or One Day?
It's because of where it falls on the calendar, is it in the middle of the week or something like that? Yeah, it's not tied to a weekend like it has been, so.
I saw that, which makes sense, because it's a long weekend for people that have to work it.
Yes, and that's always, that's.
Volunteers are a lot.
The volunteer, or lack thereof, has been an issue growing over the years for them, so I do have a meeting tomorrow, so we're trying to work around the calendar of a, of a one-day, and what does that mean in terms of the footprint? And, um, all the other things that go with it, you'll, you'll see maybe less carnival rides, because you can't get a carnival company to come in for just
One day.
A, a short period of time, but trying to think about how to attract the crowd and entertain the crowd one day.
I think they will be here on the twenty-eighth.
They being?
The salute.
For the funding part of it.
Yes, for the funding part.
We have a number built in the budget for that, don't we?
Yes.
And the, the sugar daddy is stepping back this year, he's not doing what he did last year, but at least we got one year out of him.
He's got a conference room now.
Yeah.
Sam, I'm not sure if they were intending to be there, or if they were just asking you about the money. Because the agreement, we, Jill makes it up, you actually sign it as a chairman, and we distribute the money based on that, so.
We will let the Western Commissioner at the meetings talk and see if they want to come make a presentation.
Otherwise, it was just to sign this.
Yeah, I think they just, they're, they're, they're getting their funding in order, and they wanted to know if we were in the, in the queue, and I, I think the answer is yes, we are for the five.
I mean, if they want to come and talk about it, and kind of tell how it's going to be different this year, and do a little.
Well, you, you might want to meet the new, uh.
Suzanne?
Is that event coordinator?
Sam, Samantha. So, uh, Penny Smith is stepping back, and Samantha, Sam is stepping forward, and I think maybe to have her here, we'd introduce her to the crowd would be good. I'll, I'll bring that up to, at tomorrow's meeting with them.
Okay.
Yeah, that was all I had, I was just curious what it was, how much it was changing this year, so.
Okay, anything else? Okay, our next meeting will be February fourteenth at nine AM, I would entertain a motion to stand in recess.
So moved.
Till four-thirty then, I'll make the motion, yeah.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
All right, Sam, you're almost at your three hours, you better get home.
I know, yeah.
You came in so early at three hours.
They used to share, I'll tell you what, Sydney.